All right. The December 6th meeting, excuse me, of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This is being broadcast live and taped for later broadcast. First order of business is the approval of minutes from November 15th. We were all here. Is there anything that anyone would like to amend those minutes with? No, not seeing that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 15th?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Public comment, we don't have any audience tonight, so we also don't have any correspondence. We don't have any personnel, but we do have a student advisory committee member here to give us an update.
So we have Connor Carrington-House with us tonight.
All right, for an update, is this mic working? Excellent. As far as the high school goes, winter sports are in full swing. Concert season is also upon us with the high school concert on Wednesday, the 20th, and an elementary school concert on December 18th. From the student perspective, the merging of the schools appears to be flowing very smoothly. And we also have an NHS talent show this Friday. And that's it for the big news of the schools from a student perspective. Thank you.
Connor, where is the talent show being held?
In the auditorium at the school. I can't remember what it's called.
Okay, no, that's great. Well, thank you. It was nice having you here tonight. Subcommittee updates. So I think the policies subcommittee is going to give a report.
Yeah, the policies subcommittee, we met and reviewed some of the policies from Section K. Last full committee, we had flagged for further discussion and review by the policies subcommittee. So we went back, reviewed some of those policies. They, one specifically, recall, on advertising, and then a second one on the facilities and campus. So we spent most of our time discussing those two in detail. We did really go into detail on those and really looked and were very thoughtful about our amendments to those policies. We ended up approving those to bring to the full committee for, I guess it would be for our first read next time we meet. Is that the plan, I believe? So I don't, Amy, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
All right, well, thank you. There's no first or second reads at this time. So that means in an expeditious manner, we'll be moving to the Strategy for District Improvement update with strategic priorities apparently being the...
So we have Principals Rosen, Waterman with us tonight. And if you recall from the August meeting and September meeting, that we had looked at this first-page draft of our Strategy for District Improvement, where we had rolled out our mission, vision, core values, theories of action, as well as the three major strategic objectives. So tonight, I'm gonna pull it up so we can all see it. So tonight, the principals are gonna step us through those back pages which are completed. They'll talk about the process they went through working with their school councils to get this work done. And just as a reminder, this basically replaces the concept of the school improvement plan and wraps it all into one district plan. So if somebody says, you know, do we still have school improvement plans? The answer is yes, but they're, they're in an iterative form as the strategic priorities connected to each of our big rocks, which are those three strategic objectives. So if you have that doc as you scroll through it, when you get to page two, that's where the principals are gonna kind of step us through their output and outcome-based evidence and talk about the process they went through and our hopeful outcomes for the remainder of the school year. So I will turn it over to the two principals. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hello. There are some of these that are very similar for elementary and then middle and high school, so Amy and I will tag-team a little bit on them. But we both worked closely with our assistant principals and our school council members, along with kind of each other and Mark as well, to put somewhat of a draft together so that when we met with our school council, we were able to present information and ideas we had, talk through the output-based evidence and the outcome-based evidence as well, and hear some really good feedback from our school council members, which was wonderful because they were very agreeable to what we had and were excited about the direction we were moving in. So strategic objective number one, growth and achievement for all students. RES, we have chosen, with the work also with Jody Goodhue, we have chosen two goals to work on. The first one is putting together, working closely with Bridget O'Connell, MTSS system, so a multi-tiered system of support, designed to identify and address the strengths and needs of all our students and have that all based on data. So Bridget O'Connell is our team chair, and she has a background in putting together an MTSS team, so she and I are going to co-chair this, and we're starting some of the work on Friday, which we're really excited to get started on that. And our next smarty goal, I guess, is to acquire a data warehouse for all information on students. So right now, we're using Galileo that houses our benchmark data as well as our MCAS data in one location, but Jody and I are working closely to put something more together, whether it's, right now, we are putting a lot in the Google Drive so that it's more accessible for teachers and for us to look, but we're looking at outside sources to bring in so that we can click on a student and have all their data information in one location, which will be much easier for everybody, especially when we have data days and future planning for the teachers.
So to tag-team on the elementary school, and for those of you who have been around for a while, you've probably heard us here talking about IST and MTSS and kind of streamlining that process. I was talking with Mark about this, that this is not a new goal for us, and there actually has been a lot of work that has been done to really streamline our systems around IST as part of the ECL grant. You know, back in 2019, we really focused on that with a group of people, and we're really proud of the work we had. The reason it continues to be a goal is because with the transition, and just with the lapse in time, you know, over 2020, 2021, some systems and structures got changed. Also, at the middle and high school, we've had a new school psychologist, had quite a turnaround each year with that position, and that really is the person who really owns this IST process at the school level. And so we thought with our brand-new leadership team, really, at the school-based level, this was a great opportunity to take some of the work that we had already done, not toss it, but do an entirely new MTSS system district-wide, so we could just make sure that the systems we're using at each school are consistent. That was one of the questions that came up in the school council, was like, do you have no system now? Is this being done? The answer is yes, we do have a system. We are routinely doing this. The bigger issue is just, is it being done exactly the same way at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school? And more importantly than that, like, how is that data translated across schools? Because what we're finding is even though it's actually being done, I think, very well at each school level, it's not necessarily translating from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade in a way that really is helpful to teachers and staff. So that's part of our district goal, is to streamline, align, look at what's working in each building, and then just make a consistent process and help with the transition piece, especially between buildings. So that is something that we thought was really important to do as a district, because at the school levels, the systems are working relatively well. It's really more a matter of alignment. So we're gonna be doing a steering committee around that.
So before we move on to the next one, just so that we don't all find ourselves in acronym abyss here, right? So MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support, some of us might know that as old RTI. And IST, Instructional Support Team, some of you might know that as SST, Student Success Team, or Child Study Team, CST is what it's all called in other parts of the country, and even in other parts of the Commonwealth for that matter.
But actually, maybe even in different schools. It's called different things.
And even in different schools, right?
Because IST was middle and high school, and I don't think that the elementary school used that term. So that's exactly what we're talking about.
So, Mr. Chair, at your pleasure, you decide, would you like them to do all of the strategic priorities, or would you like them to do a section so that we don't all forget things and then pause for discussion on each one of them?
Like you're leading the witness here.
Up to you. Up to you either way.
I think, section by section, because we might have questions. So I have a couple of questions about the data warehouse that's being referenced here. So are we talking about, obviously, it's a common repository, obviously, you're looking for patterns. Is it anonymized, so you're looking for patterns, or does it have the ability to look at a particular student to see what their particular needs are?
We will be able to look at a particular student and see their needs. So what we're finding now is, tonight, Jody and I were putting some data together for our first data meeting on Monday, and she had probably six tabs at the top and was just going through different websites and different areas where teachers have their data stored because it's, reading assessment is in one place, math is somewhere else. So we're trying to find one system that we can use where I could pull up Amy Rose and see all of her data information in one key place. And then we can also keep track of trend lines that we're seeing, things that we're implementing to help the data improve for her, and things like that. So right now, Jody and I, and we're working with the classroom teachers, and Jody's really leading the way for this, of creating a good system for now, that is all housed in Google Drive, so all the teachers have access to it.
Okay. And so it's really by individual, there's no capacity to look at trends within the school other than obviously the reviewer recognizing that there's something that seems to be hitting multiple students.
So you could, no, so you could sort by skill sets and deficiencies. You should ultimately be able to sort by, you know, right down to, on a particular common assessment, what percentage of students missed X, because that can inform our instruction as well as our scaffolding to meet the needs of kids. So it actually can meet both purposes. It can help inform instruction, it can help us find instructional gaps or in resources. But ultimately, this would, in a district our size, we could really leverage this as a tool systemically, so that over time, now I'm an eighth-grade teacher, I could look at that child's data, and I would have a snapshot of his or her or their skill sets, deficiencies. I might say, wow, they're really struggling in math, but then I look at the data and go, whoa, they're actually killing it in math compared to where they were four years ago.
Right.
Right? So that's, that, we miss a lot of that because we don't have that shared data over time. So I applaud the team for doing this.
What we're looking forward to, this will help us with the transition meetings for our fifth graders going into sixth grade, and helping the middle school team plan better for the students that are coming in.
And one more question, it's really about just understanding what degree of capacity the data warehouse has. Is this something that a lot, does it have an interface essentially that allows you to define the criteria to gather from all those pieces? So it's a, you know, it's a one setup, but for each student, you have a comparative grid? Or is it more like a giant container that has all the stuff there, but the individual reviewer has to compile it every time? I'm trying to get a feel for how intelligent?
When we choose one, I can tell you.
Yeah, okay.
But Jody has a few, I think, two in mind that she has been looking at more in-depth than I have at this point. So when we choose one, I can give you some more information, but I think we want it to be as user-friendly and comprehensive as possible.
Okay. And is that choosing process, do you have input from various individuals in the building?
That's the steering committee.
Good, okay. All right, thank you.
I had a question, which actually is a follow-up to that. I know Aspen does some of the warehousing of data, a lot of it, but I'm not sure how user-friendly it is and what sort of, you know, sorting and trends and metrics you can sort by.
Yeah, Aspen does have some that we access, it's just not, we want something better, a little bit more comprehensive, that we can really put all the information in together and not be pulling from different resources.
And I'm gonna age myself, but any child of the eighties, do you remember when they came out with like, the all-in-one stereo systems that we thought were so cool? That little portable boombox that had the CD player, the receiver, the dual-take decks and everything in it? I was a component kid. I had a separate CD player, a separate receiver, and my whole philosophy was if the tape deck on that little unit breaks, now everything's gone, or you don't get the best of everything. And when you start to use a product that was really designed to be a student management system for one purpose and say, now we get an add-on and a plug-in, it becomes problematic. So I think, to answer both of your points, we're trying to find the right product slowly. That's why the steering committee will do a lot of this work and come back with some recommendations, and ultimately, we'll have to figure out, you know, everything from how we find it to how we implement it.
Good. Other questions?
My only question is whether you have tech support on this committee as you go and look for a data warehouse. I think of the implications around the security of student data, how user-friendly it will be for teachers, training, all that.
Yes.
Do you have some help?
We do. Right behind me, Monty and Mike are gonna help us, or have been along the way as well.
Good.
Priority two, one.
Do you wanna start with this one?
Sure. So I can actually lead us through, and Amy can jump in. This is a district goal, that's why they all look pretty much the same, because they were purposely done that way, because the district has been going, spending quite a bit of time, as you learned last time I was here, a couple weeks ago, we talked about the professional development plan, and really rolling it out in a systemic way across all three schools, so that, you know, we thought 100% of staff is lofty, but if 100% of the staff do not know that at least we have a professional development plan around, you know, DBIE and diversity, equity, inclusion, and can speak some common language around it, then we're doing something wrong, because we're talking about it a lot. And so we understand that people will be at varying levels of readiness to be able to, you know, implement access and understand the concepts, but we are very hopeful that at least by the end of this year, everybody will really understand that it's an important aspect of what we're doing, you know, we're living, we're breathing it, and we're trying to really make it a part of who we are. So that's part of just making sure that we're doing a good job communicating that to the staff and making sure that our opportunities are meaningful for them across all three schools, you know, in a differentiated way for what they all may need. And in collaboration with that, a part of us getting into the classrooms and doing the work with evaluation system, we have partnered with DESI to be one of their pilot schools for the new evaluation rubric, which is really focused on this kind of work when we get into classrooms, making sure that the opportunities are accessible to all students and that they're really focusing on this belonging work. So we, along, the leadership team, along with teachers from each building, and I may have mentioned, I think I mentioned this last, last time, but are actively working with DESI through their pilot program, and there's, I think, one to two meetings a month after school that we're participating in to really dive into this work. We all have teachers at each building level that have volunteered there to be part of the rubric, so that we can actually go into their classrooms and see how we would use it in the evaluation process, talk through the language, see how different or maybe similar it is, and then just have opportunities to understand the rubric a little bit more before we have to implement it with all the staff next year. So all three schools have kind of taken this on as something that is a pretty, you know, in-depth process, and we're committed to it, but it's a lot of time and energy from both teachers and administrators, so putting it in the plan, we thought was something that was important, because we are doing it, and we're, it's gonna be something that's gonna guide how we move forward in the future, you know, around our work in this area. So that's something that we're consistently working on across all three schools.
If, I will add just a couple of things with the work in restorative circles that we have been doing at all three schools. We have found, at the elementary level, less intake forms in the office since we have been doing restorative circles, and the teachers are, I think they knew this, but now they've kind of been empowered to handle a difficult situation within the classroom, and the other kids will be okay while you talk to one student off to the side or two students off to the side about a situation that's happening there. And so the students are not, you know, being sent to the office and then waiting because Jody and I are in a meeting or we can't meet with them right now, or we don't have any of the facts. So I give a lot of credit to the staff that we're working with, because they're taking a lot of tough discussions on themselves with the kids, but they're finding that it's creating a stronger sense of belonging within the classroom, they're creating stronger connections with their students as well. And then Jody and I, and the counselors and I, we have all led several restorative circles, and I know Amy's done that across both schools as well. And I have found that it didn't matter the age, whether they were in first grade or fifth grade, it's been really fun to see the students rise to the occasion and kind of take over the meeting and lead the discussion the way that they needed to in their own creative ways. So that's been really, it's been really fun to see, and it's been a wonderful process to see the students' problem solve without always an adult telling them the next steps or what it should look like or how it should sound like. So it's been really amazing to see.
And not to, not to get too much on PD, but we did just have a PD day yesterday, so some great energy around the, the high school had their second session with Northeastern University and the middle school. I led them through a sense of belonging work where we did a lot of breakouts around certain behaviors and how we could be handling those behaviors in a more restorative way, and how we can make sure that every student, even if they're struggling, you know, that we understand who they are, what they are, where they come from, and that they need to feel like they have a place in the school somewhere, and really being able to develop that. And just looking at the feedback surveys last night was nice, because there was a lot of people who had said, like, this work seemed foreign and is now becoming more familiar, or we've actually seen this work in our classrooms. And Amory, Amanda, and John Parisi, who had done the Northeastern workshop with Mark and I last spring, so I had kind of left them, like, you're gonna be in charge of this because I'm gonna be leading the middle school, and it was great afterwards for them to, you know, be sharing, like, he would have been so proud, and people were like, really highlighting how important this work is, which, again, takes, takes a lot of, like Amy was saying, it's just, when we say 100% of the staff are, know about this, everybody is at such different levels of like, of readiness to be able to accept, or maybe just know how to, not even accept, just know how to do it or what it looks like. And it's really been nice just to see with consistency how they're starting to feel good about their work and the success, some of the success that we have had, hopefully more to come.
Question on this section? Okay. So 2.2 does connect to professional development, so I know we had a pretty good presentation on PD just last week, but if you guys want to highlight a couple of the big takeaways on this, that'd be great.
Sure. RES is, the staff is working with Keys to Literacy, which Mark helped us bring on board with his experience with them. We're very grateful for that. And they are helping us, and our staff, learn how to teach reading better for, right, an easier way to say it. So we have adopted inter-reading, a new reading program for the school just this year, and so far, so good. We've heard a lot of positive feedback last night during parent-teacher conferences from the parents, and the teachers seem to be enjoying it. And so we partnered with Keys to Literacy, so they're providing background knowledge to the teachers and teaching them all the components of reading instruction and good and teaching instructional practices. So grades K to three are focused on beginning stages of reading, and grades four to eight are working on comprehension. So they've had a couple of PD days that we've had really good feedback from the teachers. Jody and I have been able to sit in on parts of those, and just a lot of dynamic discussions, a lot of great questions by the teachers, and a lot of takeaways that the teachers can go back to their classroom and implement right away, which is wonderful. And we will start some coaching sessions beginning in March. And our other area we're working on is our new class called SEELA, so Social Emotional Learning Activities. We've also received a lot of positive feedback last night through parent-teacher conferences and just how much their kids are enjoying all the work around that. So the students, each class will work with either Erin, Darlene, or Larissa. So it's our gym teacher, health teacher, and our tech teacher working together. They work with one class for six weeks on a particular area of social emotional learning. And we thought, they thought six weeks was a good amount of time, so they could do a project or really get to dive deep into some lessons, and then they rotate to another teacher. So I was just in one of Larissa's lessons, and she had given the students pieces of paper and lots of tape, and they had to create a structure that would hold, I think it was a stuffed animal for some groups, it was a lightweight book for others, they got to choose what they wanted, and they had to construct it with one or two other kids and see if it would hold it, and then if it didn't, they had to, you know, the next week and the week after to come back and kind of brainstorm ways and work together to make the stronger, make a structure stronger. So it's been really great.
So at the middle school, they're really focusing on, and they have been for, for years now, and do a phenomenal job with this, but really tightening their claims evidence reasoning, which they do across all grade levels and they do across subjects, matters, to make sure that the students are understanding, you know, how to do, how to think critically and how to make statements, and then have evidence to support those statements, and reason through difficult, you know, problem-solving type things in different areas. So they've done a lot of work to refine what that practice looks like, and they're gonna continue to do that this year through more professional development. As with everything, you know, some teams feel more confident than others, and some classes, you know, it more naturally fits. And so really continuing that work and aligning it across all grade levels is something that they've chosen to focus on, and it really does help build the skills for the students as they progress through the grades and they get into high school and have to be moving on to more complex things, to have those kinds of analytical skills. In addition, we are looking, as you know, we have implemented the first round of Project Lead the Way at the high school this year by incorporating four, I think, maybe five, Project Lead the Way classes, and we had Susie Snow from Project Lead the Way in earlier this week to really think about, you know, talk to the teachers, how is that going, what is the implementation looking like? And then part of the high school goal and the middle school goal for next year is to implement round two of that process, so, or stage two of the implementation process, which would be more advanced levels of the high school classes, so that students that took those classes this year would have a progressive, next step to take. And also, hopefully, pending we get everything set and organized funding-wise, can also start to put at least some classes or a class or two, depending, into the middle school. What's been great about that, and Mark walked, you know, walked Susie around and talked to some of the teachers, and in talking to the middle school teacher, is to really start to think about getting students excited about this really early and having them be able to start in sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade, thinking about where they can get to in high school, because obviously, there's only so far, you can go in high school if you start, you know, in 11th grade in Engineering One, but if you've started doing this work in sixth grade, there's gonna be a lot more opportunities for our students moving forward. So we're very excited about that. It is a huge overhaul in terms of just professional development for teachers doing this and equipment and training, and so, you know, it's been something we've been really excited about, but also has taken a lot of time. Mark and I, you just met with Susie, so I don't know if there's more you want to add on that, but...
Just two, two thoughts before we open this section up. One is around the SEELA section, the Social Emotional Learning, similar to how we want to lay foundational, foundational blocks for our literacy programming, right? You don't just implement reading skills in the middle of a non-ELA class. That's true from a research standpoint with social emotional learning activities too. So what we're trying to do is do some building block foundational work at the elementary, so there's a gradual release, so that ultimately, as they go up the grade spans, particularly when they cross into the middle school, but maybe even earlier, you're gonna start to see these SEL components infused across all content areas and supported by all teachers. So they learn the explicit skills, no different than explicitly learning numeracy or literacy, and then at some point, they do the gradual release. And when it comes to the, the work with Project Lead the Way, yeah, the conversation was about, you know, now that we've offered Engineering One, we better make sure we have an opportunity for Engineering Two, to create that pathway, and this cannot, this cannot continue long-term to be a content area that doesn't have a feeder. So if we're gonna offer Spanish, or English, or math, or science, or anything else at the high school, those have feeder programs, for lack of a better term, at the middle school. We owe it to our kids to do that in computer science and engineering as well. We do it in our fine arts programming, so this was another place. So as we roll into the budget season and continue to make decisions around programming and staffing and meeting the needs of kids in today's world, you know, we're gonna try desperately to find ways to make this happen, but as you know, we did this through massive grant funding last year. So we'll be, we'll be a little more creative with our funding sources this year. But great work in this particular area, so any thoughts or questions?
And then, just before we move it to questions, I didn't quite get to the health and wellness. No, no, that's okay, I didn't notice either until, until after you started talking. Yeah, so just before we open it up, the second part for the high school on 2.2 is just revisiting the health and physical education schedules and offerings. As we know, that is something that we are required by law to be doing six through 12, and at the middle school, I think that there is more continuity around that. At the high school, it has not been something that we have been able to offer consistently and routinely, and even at the middle school, there's, there's a lot of room for us to look at the new health standards, which were just released, make sure that we're aligning that across all grade levels, looking at the way we're with our scheduling committee, which we'll talk about in a minute, but are there ways to schedule better so that more students fit into these things and we can actually offer them to all students like we're supposed to, and not just the students who fit into the schedules? So that's gonna be a big focus this year with the curriculum standards and also our scheduling team, to see if we can really improve that experience and make those opportunities available for all of our students.
And it's, oh, sorry, Michael, were you gonna?
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
I just had a question about the SEELA programming, which sounds great. I feel it's sort of, over the years, there have been different iterations of this, of sort of like the six-week sessions. So how is this maybe different, or sort of, is it, is it sort of a more explicit curriculum? Is it, is there something sort of different than in the past, kind of what's been tried, or have there been sort of like lessons learned and now we'll do it this way, or?
I can only speak to what happened last year. And a lot of the social emotional was done in the classroom by the classroom teacher. And of course, the specialists would have no choice but to implement certain aspects of it throughout, you know, music and art. And of course, Erin does a great job in health class or gym class all the time anyway. But when we, Jody and I had met with the specialist, we felt that, and the classroom teachers, the feedback we were getting is we needed something a little bit more explicit for them. And the classroom teachers didn't necessarily have the time in their day to have a set lesson for them. We did ask the classroom teachers to make sure they're implementing a fifteen to twenty minute morning meeting. And that's where this, some of this can happen on a daily basis. And a lot of them do a closing circle at the end of the day as well. But collectively, we felt as a staff that there needed to be something a little bit more comprehensive. So the three teachers that are putting together the CILA program are going to, they're working on finding resources that they can use and development, developing their own curriculum. So it's going to be an ongoing process, I would say, for the next year or two. But they meet regularly, they talk to outside resources that they have and connections about how is it being done in their school. And we connect with them. They also meet during PLCs with classroom teachers to say, you know, we're about to switch, here's what we're thinking, what do you feel like your students are needing right now? So they can focus their, whatever services they're going to provide and activities, they can build it around the student needs for that particular grade.
Um, just what does the CILA acronym mean?
Social Emotional Learning Activities.
It's going to be a test on all the acronyms at the end of this.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Two, three, one.
Okay, comprehensive, comprehensive programming. So we, for RES over the next two years, we're going to probably do very, something similar that what Amy's doing for middle school and high school, working closely with Mark, to have a working group, faculty, administration, and community members to either, Mark is going to be to speak more to this, but either discuss the length of the school day or have a master schedule review. Do you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, so as we've talked about in this meeting, and as I, as I think many of us in the community recognize, there is a discrepancy between the length of the school day at the middle and the high school and the elementary school with a six and a half hour day at one and six at the other. With that said, as we've started to reach out to other school districts across, across the Commonwealth, it's not necessarily as abnormal as some of us have, have been led to believe it is. There are some school districts that are doing that. And I'm not in a position now to give you my professional opinion to judge whether it's good or bad. But what we're quickly learning is it's really about how are you maximizing the clock time that you currently have? That's what Principal Rose was just talking about. That's why we're knee deep in a middle school, high school, reconfigure schedule for next year so that we can get the most bang for our buck out of the clock time we have for the benefit of students. So that's why this is phrased this way, whether we're discussing length of school day or simply, I shouldn't say simply because it's not simple, a full master schedule review, the intended outcome is the same. How are we maximizing the clock time that we have to meet the needs of our elementary kiddos? And so we purposely made that a two-year goal for a lot of reasons. One, because we have to finish the middle high school in first. So from a capacity standpoint, it doesn't make sense. And we'd like to, to take the lessons learned from our process this year and be able to apply them to the elementary school moving forward.
And then for the middle high school, we're in the process right now. We've had two meetings, which have been very hopeful, I will say. I, as only a week in, a week and a couple of days into being a middle high school principal, I am so excited of the thought of having some sort of alignment because right now I'm just living in two totally separate worlds with no similarities in terms of, in terms of like transition times or anything like that. So just, you know, to make sure people understand the goal is not to make a schedule, the middle and high school that is exactly the same. We still want to make sure that there's a middle school schedule and a high school schedule, but just having some commonalities around transition times, maybe in my dream world, and I've made this clear to the committee, although it's not my ultimate, not my decision, but you know, to have some common time around community building for either assembly or, you know, some sort of advisory blocks where we can really work on partnerships six through 12 and get students working together. And every single time that I want to have something, I don't have to be begged, borrowing and stealing people from classes, which is what I've been doing lately. People have been very kind. But so really working on that schedule to not only maximize the opportunities that we have academically, which is obviously one of the main goals, also to think about how we're using some of that advisory, assembly, common community building for that sense of belonging, belonging work that is really important. And also just looking at like how we're using maybe some of the WIN advisory blocks, flex blocks, things like that, to make sure we're maximizing how we look at electives and how we can offer maybe more electives, like making sure that students can get health or PE, but not have to give up if they're also students on IEPs or they're students who require services and also are music kids. Like, you know, there's only so much you can fit into one schedule. So I think we've probably all been through this long enough to know not one schedule is going to be perfect. But just making sure we're looking at all the options to see how we can maximize the schedule in the best way possible for all, for the two schools. We have a committee now with teachers from both schools, Mark and I, Whitney and Amanda, assistant principals. And there's a good representation of people, good group. There's some six through 12, there's some specialists, there's core teachers. So it's, it's been a nice process. We're also going to be acquiring student feedback at Assembly this coming week. And we've been reaching out to, you know, people who may not be represented, just to give some feedback on how we can best create a schedule that works for everybody. So we're hoping to have that done. I mean, I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have it done by January, but you know, we'll see. We'll roll with it either way. But we're, we're making some good strides.
I mean, before we move on, I do want to say that I think there's fifteen or sixteen people on that team. They are working hard. They're super dedicated and committed. And we have given them permission at certain points to be selfish. When you do this work, you're there to represent a constituency, so to speak. So you might be there as a seventh grade teacher and you might be there as a fine arts teacher. So we've kind of laid up the, the model out to say, listen, our first blush is around purposely being selfish for your subject area and the kids who, who need those, those needs met. And then secondarily, and that's where we are now, we're sort of ripping that systemic Band-Aid off and saying, okay, now what's best for all of us? And we've made it clear that, you know, everybody gives something up to gain ultimately. And that, those are, that's the hard work we're about to do. And consensus is, is important. But I do, I want to thank those, those fifteen or sixteen people because I think it's a great team. They didn't have to volunteer to do this, but they're passionate about the work. So thank you.
Three, two.
All right. The two goals here for RES are both two-year goals. And they are around, well, the first one is reviewing all the materials we use for history and social studies lessons and identifying where there may be a need, lack of resources and locating and finding some resources that are more applicable. And I know that's been an ongoing issue for a while from what I'm hearing from the teachers. So I'm excited about that one. And our second one, we have to review the 2023 Mass Comprehensive Health PE Frameworks because there are some new additions there. So we're going to take a deep dive with Erin and Darlene into those and look through the new standards, revise our curriculum maps and adjust accordingly. And again, look for resources that we may be lacking at the elementary school and make sure that we have those available to the teachers.
And at the middle school, it kind of ties into what I was just talking about with the scheduling committee, but really looking at informal ways. We talked a little bit about data when we talked about the IST process. And this is a little different, similar, but different. This is more about routine, you know, just data and assessment that teachers are collecting daily, weekly, routinely in classes and having systems in place that it, it doesn't take, you know, necessarily a student to be really sinking and, you know, not doing well to reach a point of maybe being referred to IST, which is the instructional support team, or, you know, referred to for an IEP or something like that. So this is like a pre, 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 like very, anybody, anybody we see struggling through data could then be referred to a block where they could just get some extra support with teachers, typically sometimes called a WIN block, but, you know, it can be called a variety of different things. So really just looking at how we can do that more effectively and probably build that into a master schedule. It has sometimes been in the master schedule in the middle school. It isn't currently in there this year. So it's just really thinking about how, if we build it in, also putting a lot of time into the PD around that because as we know, we can build blocks and we can build systems. But if teachers aren't sure how we're using them, how are they collecting data, when, how can they refer, what does it look like? So there's going to be some work done around just making sure that the teachers, you know, first assuming we put it in the new master schedule, then how are we going to use it? And how are we going to be using that DUSI acceleration model to really just do some really proactive interventions for any kids who may need it throughout the year? So that's for the middle school. And for the high school, it is really just about continuing. Every year, we, we struggled with putting this in because this is something that we do every year. We always go through the program of studies and review. I kind of pushed to put it in because I was saying to Mark, like, this, this is routine, but we're doing it at such a deep level that it's requiring so much time and energy from the staff and the leadership in terms of, you know, really, it's not just a routine, like, okay, most of these are going to be the same and we may add a different elective. Like it's been in years past, we're really, really looking along with the budget and along with the everything, just make sure that we are building programs, sustaining programs and even creating new programs and doing it in a fiscally responsible way where we're maximizing our staff and maximizing our offerings. So this, you know, is something we always do, but we have really upped the ante last year and this year to make sure that we're not sacrificing programs and we're maximizing staff. And we're taking the staff that we have to say, you know, where we did the STEM, we went to three science teachers, but, but kept four and made a STEM teacher. And we're looking to do that, you know, with business. We have four social studies teachers. Do we want to, you know, maximize that? Maybe we don't need four for the three years of history, but we really want to make sure that we have a strong business program. And how are we using the history and the math teachers to really build that program and not just have it be one business elective, but have it be a business program, having us go out to the community and make sure that we have our, our internship programs are solid and how are we using our staff for that? And so there's just a lot of thought and time and energy on the staff's part as well, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in this and making sure that we're bringing the best opportunities to our kids with what we have. So that's where we're at with the middle high school.
So it is December 6th, Mr. Chair. And if you recall, this work really started in May or June with the leadership team, the minute I sort of published the report of entry findings that led us to the development, not just of the template and the layout of this work, but conceptually all the work. So, you know, we are small but mighty for a leadership team. So this, this group of leaders has put a ton of time and effort and thought into moving our school district forward in what I think is a really iterative and easy to digest visual plan. But it, there's a lot of meat behind it. And there's a lot of substance to the work. And we did a lot of work in August around outputs and outcomes, knowing that this committee and the community deserves to, to hear about the outcomes. And so we're purposely using that language. We're trying to use that with staff. But I, I thank the leadership team for their commitment to the work. And I do think that this format is going to be easy for us to move forward with because we can develop two-year goals, one-year goals, six-month goals. And at the end of the year, what we'll do is, the principals will come back and we'll do, you know, some kind of exit ticket with you all and just do a, a, basically a summary report on, on our, on our goals so far. And then this process will be much more expedited moving forward because this now exists. So what you'll see is you'll see an end of years kind of summary report from the principals and myself. And then over the summer, even in May and June, they work with their school councils. Over the summer, they do a little work, dive into it in September with the school councils and probably hit you with the back pages as early as October. So we'll tighten up that timeline moving forward. But thank you to the principals. Thank you to the leadership team for this work. Any final thoughts you have?
It's clearly a tremendous amount of work on top of your regular day job. So thank you for that. That's noticed and acknowledged. Mark, just as a comparison point, do you see this sort of documentation in your district or?
Well, I was going to comment that. I, I, I really like how the format of it is. It's so nice to see how it's, the alignment between the different schools and the commonalities. And to have both of you present at the same time too, to hear the similarities and differences in those for each school is really, really great. It's, it is so much more digestible all kind of in one spot than having different documents and different goals for every school. And to, to have, to, I, I'm really impressed by it. And like Mark said, the, there's a lot in there. It's really impressive what you guys have done.
We'll just say systemically, having done it several different ways under several different people, it has been very nice to, I mean, we've always tried to align across levels, so I don't mean that, but I just, it's been nice working with Amy and Jody and Amanda and Whitney and having us almost be forced to sit down and fill out the document together because we've always been, you know, tried to communicate around our individual documents. But even just the format of this has really been like, oh, well, you're doing, you know, when we originally put some of them in, they were similar, but maybe not the same. And then we were like, well, maybe they should be different because they are different schools. We're like, no, but they're really the same goal. So let's make them the same goal. So in some ways, they look redundant, but I think the consistency is something that's been really helpful, especially, you know, thinking about how we can make this transition the best possible for kids across the district too, if we're all on the same page. It's been really nice.
And I think sometimes school improvement plans get lost with, with parents and staff as well. But I could really see how this would be something that is, is out in the forefront and drives a lot of what you're doing in the schools on a daily basis.
If we do it well, it should drive our budgeting decisions. It should, it should, it should drive our, not just our school improvement planning, but our goals and our professional development and our allocation of resources. So that's the hope.
I'm impressed that Amy said Jody's name and she appeared. That was pretty interesting.
See, this is how all in alignment we all are. It's just amazing. The last thing I will say, when we were in these school council meetings, because it was a different group, some, some same people, but some different people, especially now that we merged the middle and high school. And it was nice when we walked through this, that a couple of them, one mom in particular was new to Rockport, came from Gloucester School Choice. And when we were going through this document, she's like, I wish that like, everybody, you know, could see like all this work. And I know hopefully they'll be able to because it's on the website and things like that. But it was really validating, I think, for just the parents to be able to see it in a digestible way and feel like, wow, like everybody needs to know like all the work that's happening. And, you know, so just the fact that we did this and then hopefully we can put it publicly so people can easily see it and understand it, I think goes a long way.
That's great. So I think technically, we do have to approve the strategy for district improvement. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the strategy for district improvement for the 2324 school year.
So moved.
All those in favor? Great, great work, guys. Thank you for coming in and presenting.
Before I forget to tell you, you can go home whenever you want.
So that would bring us to the presentation of our new RPS website.
So I'm going to throw the cable over to Mike. And while he's setting up, I'll do the commercial for Mike and Monty and the tech team again, that I need to do in public as often as possible. Again, an unbelievable relationship between the technology team and the school department. I, I feel like it doesn't matter what we need, somehow they help us get it. And that has, has never been my experience in seven districts in thirty years. And I can't say that publicly enough. So that, number one, for just from a support and knowledge standpoint is impressive. Two, and I know it takes a village, but I believe Mike presented last night with whoever showed up to Board of Selectment too. So Mike and Monty's team were tasked with creating two brand new websites by two different bosses, unfortunately, at the same time. So clearly Mitch and I didn't have good conversations. I had a time on that. So, so I believe that just rolled out last night. So what you're seeing tonight, the town one is beautiful. If you haven't gone to it yet, way easier. What you're going to see tonight is probably a sixty, seventy percent or more. You're going to see brand new formatting. Mike's going to step us through the usability factors, some of the conversations that we've tried to have around what we think is important. It is, it is not fully done, but we felt like we wanted to give you the precursor because we've talked about it so much. I want you to believe that we're actually doing the work. And so, and then our goal, I think we talked about a soft goal the middle of January or so, being able to just roll over from the old product to the new product. So I'll let you step through and I'll just play Van and whatever it seems to be necessary.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So to the people on the committee who have been here for a while, this may seem like Groundhog's Day, and I'm back again with a new website look. It may seem that I only come when there's a new website look, which should be infrequent, but never is. But I'm back again with another new website look. So I'm just going to give you the overview of our main page, and then we're going to take a look at some sub-pages and take a look at some of the data that we're going to
that we're going to be actually putting on the site. Um, so this is our new main page. Uh, you'll notice that one of the big focuses was to uh, tool down our main menus at the top. So we now have four big ones, um, district, our schools, community resources, and then the wonderful school committee, which we'll take a look at it in a second. Uh, right below that, we have our scrolling images slideshow. So uh, from our old page, it's going to take down a little bit smaller of a look. And then we are going to showcase our core values, our mission and our vision right here. Um, there will be links to click on it to get a little bit more info, which will explain the high expectations, the wellness and all that. Um, and we also showcase our nice logo that was created by, I believe Lori McNiff um, in the super, in the, sorry, in the student services office. Um, so that is a specific logo designed specifically for us that actually has our expectations and core values right uh, around it. And then each one of these tabs, you can click on and we'll actually show you our mission and then our vision as well, so that people can come and see exactly what the school stands for and what we believe in. So we think that's a great addition to have right on the main page. Right below that, we're going to have our at-a-glance. Uh, these are not the real numbers that we'll have there. Um, but they are just placeholders so that we can keep it there and decide what we want to showcase for the school.
So we're having a debate right now. We'll, we'll continue with the leadership team on what are the mid, what are the big four at-a-glances that we think are going to be. Uh, we did, I think we did agree that uh, from a philanthropic standpoint in this community, we definitely want to put that scholarship out there just to let people know that we have some serious support. I know the number is much higher than that. And that's why I said, nobody, that, that's not factual.
Yeah, these aren't actual numbers. And when I do show this to people, I point out that that is a very low estimate of how much we get in scholarships, which is great. To keep going, uh, we have our quick links down here. These are just placeholder quick links as well, but these will quick link to like the superintendent's page on the district. And then for each school, we'll have principal's page, lunch menus, things like that. Will be customizable for each, for each school, but will stay pretty similar so that when you go to each one, you'll kind of know where to go from there. Right below that, we have our news section, which will shuffle through our news items automatically. And you can click on any of those to get more information. We're going to focus a lot on having those pictures there so that it really grabs your attention to get to those events and uh, news items. Our district calendar, again, this is just placeholder items. It doesn't link to our real calendar yet, so you don't see certain things, but the basics are there. Uh, and then our most exciting thing is down at the bottom, we have our little video that we've created for the school, which has a drone flyover of the property with kids, you know, on the, out on the fields, kids playing on the playground. And that is underscored by our own students uh, playing of Sea and Stone, which uh, they did on their trip last year. So you can play that right from our website um, and see all of that wonderful uh, footage. And I think I have my volume down. It's not coming through the speakers, but you can hear it a little bit through there. Um, so we worked really hard on this video. The kids worked very hard to get it uh, recorded in all the different ways they did. Uh, so we're really, really, really happy with that. So if you haven't seen that already, I encourage you to take a look at that. It is posted on our YouTube page as well. So that's a basic overview of our main page. Uh, I do want to showcase some of the other pages we're working on. Uh, the first one, and I think I heard Mark hinting at this earlier, is the school committee page, which you can see, we already have a picture of our lovely school committee on uh, and all of the info that pertains to them. I, I tried, I tried my hardest. So uh, under our district tab, we also have some other breakdowns, like we have the office of the superintendent. So you guys aren't the only ones who are focused there. We also have all the lovely people who work in that department.
Everybody's going to be asking for new headshots really soon.
Yes, um, we do have a plan for, and soon as the better weather comes and we have some green foliage to do some headshots of all the staff. Uh, so they look more like Mark's wonderful headshot that made, he made me make smaller on his page. Um, but our hope is for all these pages to have an image of the staff that you know, and then to have some sort of little uh, self-typed up biography or information about them so that when people come to the website, they can actually see who is in charge of the schools, see who they're interacting with, see who their kids are with every day. And then on top of that, uh, in order to showcase the things that you all just saw, we have a new page that uh, Jody and myself have been working very hard on and the other uh, staff members who have contributed to it. Uh, the teaching and learning page, which will showcase exactly what our mission is, our purpose, our goals. It also will have the professional development page, which shows, you know, what the staff are working on, uh, our different calendars, all of that fun things. But back on the teaching and learning page, we also have different department information where you'll get linked directly to those documents um, that you are seeing to actually be able to take a look at them.
So if you don't mind, go back and then we'll come back into this.
Absolutely.
So this is one of the things we've been working really hard on. Uh, thank you to Jody for taking the lead on this work and to Amy for taking the lead on the PD this year. Um, we didn't have any of this until about three weeks ago, quite honestly. The work has been going on since probably the first month we were all together. Um, and the templates have been created, but uh, between Jody and Amy leading, uh, particularly leading the department heads and the curriculum coordinators. Um, so when you, for example, when you, you saw, you saw the PD uh, pretty indepthly at our last meeting, but if you click again on that English department, um, you'll see that the goal is every department has developed a curriculum overview. And, and Jody and I have put this together and Jody has really taken the lead now to make sure that this gets done. And you'll see that each department has come together, go back up for me.
Nope, sorry.
Um, they've come together with a purpose. So the RPS, English and Language Arts, this is kind of a this we believe statement. Then if you're a, a parent coming to the district or you're shopping for a house or you just want to know what my kid's going to learn, this is an overview of what happens in K to five in ELA. Talks about DSE, gives you a link to the frameworks at the state, tells you what our primary resource is. So we just adopted into reading, so that's on there as a primary resource. We're holding ourselves accountable to disclose what our secondary resources are. So that's out there. Those are our district-approved resources that we know teachers are using to supplement into reading for a lot of reasons. And then if you continue to scroll, you'll see some little paragraphs about what happens in K to two, what happens in three to five, and then that continues six to eight. And that, that continues nine to 12, where it gets a little more course-specific, I believe, in nine to 12, uh, which is appropriate at that level. And so we have a curriculum overview for every single department. Um, that was really crafted by department heads. And I know Jody's done a lot of editing work, uh, formatting to make sure that if you click on all of these, Mike, um, and I will make you do that, but if you click on all of these when the site's live, each one of them, the math one probably looks pretty good. So if you go to the math one, um, like fourth, there you go. Um, similar, exact same format, but their own philosophies, their own primary resources. Tells you we use iReady, ST Math, Mind Research, Galileo. Um, so really, really nice overviews that we're going to hold ourselves accountable for keeping updated um, over time. Um, again, none of this was here a, a year or so ago. So I mean, there's been a massive, so this is as much about all of the backend work as it is about the functionality of the website. So uh, thank you to Jody, Amy, all of our curriculum coordinators and content leaders. Um, because this, this page alone, um, no pun intended, puts us on the map. It really gives us a spirit of transparency and communication out to the community to let people know what we do and how we do it.
Yeah, and once we launch the new website and this page becomes live and accessible, we'll make sure we showcase that on social media, um, because we want prospective parents, uh, families looking to come here to be able to see exactly what we have on there.
So the hope is when you click on English department, you'll see similar, you'll see photos of the three curriculum coordinators. You'll see some little bio about each curriculum coordinator, let the community kind of in on the secret of who these people are and what our curriculum leadership structure is. And then you'll be able to go off to the overview. So we're trying to mirror that superintendent page a little bit all the way through. Principal's page will say Ms. Rose with a little bio that Ms. Rose writes. Same thing for Ms. Waterman that are all the way through. Um, so that's the hope is that we're really letting people kind of know who we are and what we're all about as they, as they surf through.
The new website? I mean, it's a much more attractive, almost marketing-type piece from the splash page on, which is something that we've been sorely lacking. And is there, can I ask, I'm sorry, Mike, were you?
No, no, no.
Go right ahead. And can we presume, because Mike referenced, for those of you who've been here for a while and have seen this presentation, one of the sticking points in the past has been ownership of the content being updated. And in particular, I was really happy to see, if you're a parent, you're probably looking for the calendar to see, when do I go to see X? It looks beautiful and I presume we've resolved the, who's populating that real time?
Yeah, so the calendar got fixed last year. So all we're going to do is carry over that tool. Um, and we've got great feedback from the community around the calendar. Um, we did have a good conversation about like, you know, it can't be Mike owning the whole website. It's not realistic. So I know that Jody has access to the teaching and learning page. So we're going to try to talk about building capacity, either with certain people owning their own sections of pages or training up a couple admin assistants who can do that work at central office. Lori has the background in design. Um, so between Lori and Amanda, we'll have a couple people who are doing the work on the website for us. So it's really about uh, kind of articulating who the, who the owners of the work will be at each school or district level. And we're, we're doing that behind the scenes right now.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of stuff on there that's old.
Yeah.
That's, you know, even, even the principal served, the superintendent served, it does not need to be on the website anymore.
Particularly the content of the photo of the school committee, absolutely. But can I be super literal?
Sure.
Do we have a plan or do we have a designee for who owns the information on the calendar getting placed there?
Yes, yes.
Great.
Yes, it, it's crystal clear.
Would that be your question too?
That's already, has improved greatly.
Yeah, yeah. Miracle.
You know, I thought it was a miracle when everything got on a Google Calendar and you can get, you can download the Google Calendar to your Google Calendar as a parent. So therefore everything is in, that was a total miracle. But this looks great and it does, you know, we've been, if we've been here for a while, it is kind of Groundhog Day. But I think this has a lot of aspects that, it's not in a way, because this has a lot of, you know, a lot of things. I love the pictures of the staff and a little bio. Because right, sometimes when you go to the staff directory and it, like for the elementary school, it just says teacher. Like, I don't know who's teaching first grade, who's teaching third grade.
Yes, so um, we, we found that the, the staff directory that's built into most webpages is subpar. So we're working on building our own that will reference that. Uh, so that you can go and see grade two team and, you know, first grade team and the high school teachers and things like that.
It's really great. And I think I love the core values um, being front and center.
See on the video.
Yeah, the video was very.
Is this a hosted package, Mike?
Yes, so that we're still with the same company. Um, so that's the benefit of this is it's really just a facelift. So the day we go live with this, there's no downtime, there's no switch over, there's no oops. It's going to be one minute the old site and you're going to snap your fingers and it will be the new look because it's just the front-end look that changes.
Yeah, so add this to the list of things they don't teach you in superintendent's school, right? So like, like how many refreshes you get, I, that's not language that's ever come out of my mouth, but apparently our contract permits us to only do so many changes and so many pieces of it at once. So I'll say something to Mike and he'll say, write it all down and give me like 12 at the same time.
Yes.
Right, so that's, you know, whereas I clearly am, am just an out-loud processor, which is irritating to many people around me.
Yeah, so we were lucky enough, um, when we signed with Ed Leo, I think a few of you were on the committee when we looked at that. Um, they gave us a refresh every, I believe it was three years. We've only been with, with them with, for two. Um, but we were able to negotiate that we were staying with them um, to get that refresh a year early. Uh, and then, yeah, we went through the process of changing and looking and adjusting and things like that. So it was a fun process again.
Well, it really paid off. It's much cleaner, much more easier to navigate. And congratulations, Monty and Mike, on the town website as well. That's been getting.
Yes, that's, that's also.
Lots of Rockport stuff applause, which is.
I know, I, I saw that post and I was like, oh no, this is it. This is when I finally make the page, but it was all positive. So, yep, I was happy.
Quite an achievement.
So I'll come back and let you know in January-ish, uh, when we've pushed the button and then you guys can play around with it on your own. Thank you very much. You can, thank you, go as you wish.
Just throw me that thing back.
Awesome job. Well, it's time for the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC, huh?
Yes.
So it looks like this replaces the New York City field trip or?
It does.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they went last year for the first time, right.
Right.
Uh, so in your drive, you have an itinerary and you have the, uh, again, we have not gone digital with this form. Uh, that would be the next move is to try to go digital with our field trip applications.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I don't think this is a controversial approval at this point. Uh, so, um, so I think we had, we had a great trip, we had a great trip last year. Uh, feedback from student staff, uh, uh, and Mr. Rodman, who went on the trip last year as the administrator, was really positive. Um, connects to our, you know, world history component, uh, as a world, as a worldly city. And I think, um, you know, in, in today's political climate, uh, we need to do everything we can to make sure we're engaging our kids in their civic uh, and American history. And I, you can't, you can't do that in a richer, deeper place than DC. So it's all I have. We just hope you can vote to approve tonight so they can share all the information with parents. As is the case with all trips, we, we, we never want to say no to anybody for financial reasons. So there's going to be fundraising and there's going to be tuition, scholarship uh, based on certain, certain criteria or just the ask. So um, if a kid wants to go, the kid's going to go.
Great, and it looks like the, the cast of chaperones is to come, but it looks like the appropriate number.
It's basically going to be about 10 to one or a little less, depending on the number, yeah.
Any questions or concerns?
A question of the, on the cost on the approval form. Is that, I know that teachers were um, asking parents for feedback about fundraising.
Yeah.
So if there is any fundraising as a whole,
Yeah.
is, is the cost on the approval form kind of a worse, uh, the highest possible, but it could be lower?
That's pre-fundraiser.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the conversation that I, I won't get into, but I'm sure that they're going to have is, you know, we're going to fundraise for all, we're going to fundraise individually, every trip runs a little differently, so.
The intent is that every child goes?
The intent is every child has the opportunity to go. There are families who for different reasons, the, the child won't go. Uh, but yes, it's, it's, this is our curriculum for the week, is the way this works. Uh, in Massachusetts, uh, every field trip has to tie to the frameworks. Even if we just go to um, Six Flags and study physics on a roller coaster.
And um, if COVID should rear its nasty head, there's some kind of trip insurance somehow built into the structure?
Every family is strongly encouraged to take the insurance.
Amy Rose, at one of the, the transition meetings she held, I think she spoke about how important it is for the eighth grade to have kind of a, a endy, end of their school, you know, really six, seven, eighth grade. And that, I think this is a great, a great end of their middle school experience.
I think in my time as a middle school teacher and administrator, I think I've actually done this trip about 13 times. Uh, and believe it or not, I would go every time. It's, it's a great trip, yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC on May 26 through 31 as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor? It's like fun. Donations, Brace Cove has once again generously given us, go ahead, Mark, $4,000 for scholarships.
Yep, and Donna McAuliffe uh, has also come through with a donation uh, at the last minute. I don't mean last minute, I just mean, didn't make your original slide deck. At the last minute for a donation of four Bruins tickets. Um, those will be used as a fundraiser for the DC trip. Um, so raffled off, auctioned off, however they're going to do that. And whatever the proceeds are on that will get uh, used to supplement the trip. So we need you to make a motion to accept both gifts.
I think, you know, both are very generous. I'm blown away by the continuous generosity of Brace Cove. I mean, it's an amazing, amazing thing that they do every year. So do we have a motion to accept the donations as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? Now we have an update on the North Shore Education Consortium.
So um, I've been in uh, multiple meetings. I uh, am a member of the finance committee for uh, the consortium. Uh, and also am your representative on the board of directors in my role of superintendent. So um, just as a quick commercial to put everybody who's new to the process uh, on the same playing field, uh, this is our special education collaborative. There are roughly 20 member districts. Um, and they have a variety of schools, the Kevin O'Grady School, the North Shore Recovery High School, North Shore Academy, North Shore Academy, lower and upper. And then they have a, a couple that are not on their campus, um, but that are in Topsfield and other locations and other, in other buildings. The conversation that I have been engaged in recently is around the need for a capital, one-time capital ass, assessment. And so in your folder, um, you have uh, a sample of some of the slides that have been presented to the board of directors. There is a need to do a full HVAC project. Um, I won't go through every one of the notes with you because you have them. I won't go through every one of the notes with you because you have them, but the short version of this is since 2009, the Board of Directors in different iterations has been told that the buildings are getting closer to needing a lot of high-end maintenance work. And as a result, every Board of Directors has continued to financially kick that can down the road because they didn't want to go back to their local communities and deal with it. And now we have a Board of Directors of 20 of us and out of the 20, only one person was even here back then to even relive the history for us. And so the real struggle right now is that the Executive Director Fran is in the middle of trying to secure a bank loan to do all of the work that is articulated in the slides that I've given you. And it's basically roughly a $2 million loan. The point of that loan will be to be able to qualify, sorry, let me rephrase that. It's a $2 million capital assessment. The $2 million capital assessment will help us be able to access the loan and be able to fund this project. We own the building. I think that's the way we have to remind ourselves of this fact that if we needed an HVAC system in one of our buildings, we own the building, we'd have to take care of that somehow through a capital ask, one-time emergency relief, or God forbid, through the school district budget. So in this case, it's owned by 20 people. It's like being part of a condo association, for lack of a better description, and we are assessing ourselves. So I was in a long finance meeting last week and I was in a two-plus hour Board of Directors meeting this morning. The original hope was that Fran was going to get the board to vote unanimously for the one-time assessment and on the tuition increases. That did not come through today for a lot of reasons. We have different sizes and types of municipalities within our organization and as a result, some needed to go back and talk to mayors or talk to school committees a little longer before people were comfortable voting. So the Board of Directors has another meeting in two weeks and that's kind of our drop-dead date where we have to vote on whether or not we're going to move forward with this. The consequences of not moving forward are really detrimental to the model of the collaborative. They'd have to shut down a building. You're talking about students with really high-end needs who need the building to function the way it functions. It's got adult lifts built into it. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of customization of that building. So, you know, it's whether we're the victims of poor planning or not, this is where we found ourselves now as a leadership group of the consortium. And the reality is even with this proposed increase and with this one-time assessment, it is still the least inexpensive or most fiscally conservative way to educate the children. And we feel like by educating them, the majority of them, they're when we can, they're at least still part of our district, so to speak, because we own the collaborative and have a lot of say in the programming and decision-making. So what I've given you tonight, instead of hard numbers, is a really soft potential of what could happen in two weeks on the vote, just so the committee knows what's going to happen. So if the vote goes through to do the one-time capital assessment for $2 million, the impact on our public school district is going to roughly between $65,000 and $100,000 as a one-time capital assessment. The reason that is so broad is because my group cannot decide yet if it's going to be a fair share split, if it's going to be prorated by student, or if there's going to be some other calculated way to figure out how we are paying for this. So what I'm carefully explaining is I'm confident that that's the broad number, that we're going to fall between 65 and 100, but there's a lot of drivers into where we fall. The second part of this is that along with voting for the one-time assessment, in order to continue to make the budget work, Fran is doing what we are doing in lots of public schools. We're looking at staffing, we're looking at programming, we're looking at rightsizing. She's doing all of that same work. She avoided the tuition increase at the same level as the privates did last year, but the financial plan that we are privy to now does not allow us to do that. So the proposal would be for us to vote on not only the $2 million one-time assessment, but a 14% increase in tuition for Kevin O'Grady students and all other programings, 8%. What I can show you, which literally was sent to me an hour ago, so thank you to Cheryl Keating and Martha for putting this together. This is just rough estimates right now. So when we get to the budget in a few minutes, the budget that you already have in front of you is predicated on a four-point, we'll see it in real time in a minute, but four-point something percent increase to our special ed tuition. So the budget you have in your slide deck currently does not reflect these numbers. So right now, this, based on our real students, five students at Kevin O'Grady, it goes up 92. So it's a 14% and what's built into the budget I sent to you is basically a four or 5% increase. So the differential between the five and the 14 is what we'll be adding to the next rounds that I'll show you in January. And then this is the number for the students at all of the other programings at an 8% increase. So you're looking at about $120,000 in tuition increases, some of which are accounted for, maybe 4.5% to 5% are actually accounted for in the draft budget I've sent you already. But the difference I have, this was literally sent to me as I was sitting in this room. So I didn't really have time to play with a new updated differential for you. But just so that you see, this number will have to be baked into our budget. This work here, I have met with Mitch, our town administrator, on two occasions since this has come to light. Had a similar conversation with Mitch that I had with you all tonight about we own the buildings, what would happen if it was at one of our physical schools here? And, you know, we did say that we would be, you know, in most situations going to the town for some kind of debt relief or some kind of one-time emergency funding. And he is aware that that's going to be a conversation we have and that we're going to try to do everything in our power so that that 65 to 100K does not get dropped into our FY25 operating budget, but that the town side, because, you know, in essence, we own the building, that there's another mechanism to cover that. So I'm confident that Mitch and I will come to some kind of discussion and that he'll work that through with the Board of Selectmen. But just so that you know, that the tuition will hit our FY25 budget, but the hope is that the one-time assessment does not.
So can I ask a question about the tuition increase? Because as a consortium school, unlike the non-consortium where the state simply mandated it, is this tuition increase proposed and pending a vote by the Board of Directors?
Correct.
Right.
It's a package vote that I'm going to be faced with in two weeks, a package vote to vote to accept the capital assessment and these tuition increases, the way, and all of them together allow us to attain the loan, to start the work and for Fran to continue to run her budget based on the needs of the schools, the student needs and the facility needs. She is, and I just, I'm not in a position where I can share this out yet, but she is doing what we are doing. She is looking at staffing, she is looking at programming. But in that type of a school, you can only go so far. Yeah.
As far as the tuition increases, I don't even know if you can say this or if, maybe this is a silly question, but those students that you showed, we have X number of students there and these will be the increases. So those are all Rockport students? None of them are choice students that will be getting back that?
No. 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 I have seen the projected numbers to prove that even with the 14%, the 8%, it's a substantial reduced cost compared to if we had sent them to another private special ed school.
Can you help us with what circuit breaker does or doesn't do in this situation?
It's going to depend on how we, how the board agrees at our level, to the extent we can, to bill ourselves. So there was an interesting discussion today about it all being as a one-time assessment that towns or cities help with. Then there was another conversation about if, let's say, our number was 100K, could you roll that into the billing cycle so that we could get some money from the state in relief for that? So that is an option. It's not an option I've ever actually been part of. So my learning curve's pretty quick on this. So I was in a meeting this morning to talk about that. I think in two weeks, I'm going to have a better understanding of that. But that would be the only way to get some good state relief. What I haven't said earlier is that the MSBA, who funds all of the school projects in Massachusetts, does not fund collaboratives. I don't know why. That's a question we are putting forth to the legislature and I know Fran's already asking that. So when a town builds a new middle school, a new high school, they get 50, 60, 70% reimbursement, depending what the deal is. Collaboratives are not part of that deal, even for an accelerated repair. So I think this district has been part of that process in the past. So if you do an accelerated repair for a building envelope, a window setup, HVAC, that kind of work, they don't get it from the state for that purpose either.
Is there something that local school committees in these 20 communities should be doing to advocate for an SBA to perhaps consider adding the consortiums to the groups they support?
So I, yeah. So the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable is one of the most active, politically active roundtables in the state. And so I know that even though I'm only my second year, some of the veterans on that roundtable are heavy, heavily engaged in the MASs legislative team. So there is, there is a push to try to get to our legislatures to say, listen, this mechanism has to be fixed. The short version of this is we're going to be told right now, I can feel this, that you've, since 2009, the owners of the building have not addressed the problem.
Right.
I don't like that answer. I just, you know, been around the block enough to know that that's going to be somebody's answer, despite the fact that it becomes a funding issue and you're making difficult choices around programming and human beings versus facilities.
Just one last question. Has the board considered selling any of the properties in order to consolidate those dollars and rent space in better condition?
So I don't know if I, yeah, I think it's in one of the slides. I think there's, just bear with me. Other than the what does the project include slide, you'll see the other auctions explored, selling the building and relocating KOG. The cost of the project would be a certain amount annually, but to rent or retrofit a building that we don't own, based on the population of student needs, the project prediction was exorbitant at best. We could reject the bid and resubmit, but we all know how that goes in a climate of building right now, that nobody's going to come back lower. Doesn't happen. We could find a buyer for the building and lease it back. And again, that, when the accountants ran that up the flagpole, it didn't come back in a positive way either. So I've worked with a lot of executive directors. Fran is a very, very talented educational leader with some savvy political skills and finance skills. And her team has really, in my opinion, as a board member, her team has done everything they can, with the exception of just pointing out the fact that we waited as an ownership group way too long to address it. And you wouldn't do this to your house, I hope. And we shouldn't have done it to our building.
I have a question about that. The range between 65,000 to 100,000.
Yeah.
The capital assessment is based on how it's being assessed, right? Between being split or prorated? So my question is, I guess, one, I'm surprised that that's not already predetermined in some agreement between those 20 districts? And if not, going forward for future needs that might arise?
Historically, it's my understanding that the team had decided to split the pie evenly when there were not just around building needs, but when there are shared costs in general unrelated to specific tuitions. There's nobody left historically except one out of 20 of us. And superintendents have bosses and some have mayors and some have school committees and some have, you know, tri-boards because it's a regional district with three or four towns, et cetera, et cetera. So because of that, and because we are all in Massachusetts dealing with the budget constraints that we're dealing with, with rightsizing and looking at staffing and still trying to move programming forward, it's a hard conversation. And without outing anybody, some of our sister districts, you know, we might have 12 or 15 kids, some might have 70 or 80 or 100 kids. And so some of us might say, you need to prorate that. Some of us might say, well, you could have 20 in six weeks and you benefit from being a member, which is factually true as well.
Or if there's ownership, then depending on how that ownership is split too. I mean, I could see a case for both ways.
Yeah.
I guess it's more about what is that going to be and what is it going to be in the future, just so it's not as vague going forward.
It's just like running a town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have bylaws and everything. So it's a two-third vote and it's a, to the point where we had to wait because people were jumping on and off calls right today. So that $100,000 is, right now is the closest estimate I can give you for if we just took the number and split it by 20. That would be our worst-case scenario. I anticipate it being under that, but that's my optimistic view right now.
And Mark, has there been any discussion about, I know it sounds like the vote is for a package and it doesn't sound, I mean.
If we split the vote, we won't be able to sustain the programming the way that it needs to be done because more of the money will go to cover the loan and the building.
Right. I think, yeah, I think where I was going with the question was, it's unfortunate that the capital assessment and the tuition increase that wasn't seen last year when the non-consortium schools hit seemed to be linked in this. And it makes me question why there wasn't some sort of increase last year to buffer the total effect, but it sounds like it's an all or nothing proposal being put before the board.
Yeah. Yeah. I think out of respect for all of our budgets, because it wasn't a capital plan and because the work wasn't done in completion by the owner, the OPM, the owner's project manager, because the owner's project manager hadn't finished the work in the spring or even in the winter during budget season, I think in good conscience, Fran didn't feel like she could up tuition more than she did. I mean, we did have a tuition hike, it just wasn't at the 14%. And I think at the time, she felt like it was disingenuous to ask for money when she couldn't explain why.
Are we, as a school committee, supposed to give you our opinions about how that one-time capital assessment should be divided among member towns?
You're welcome to.
Or has this conversation already been had?
It's ongoing, I would imagine.
Yeah.
It was two hours this morning. It's going to be lengthy at the next meeting. So I have no problem with your opinion. I'm one vote of 20 and very conscious of that at this point.
Right. Which has always been our, our place in the consortium, really.
Yeah. And so to be fair, it's not like a regional school district where you might have five votes of first three. Like, we have 20 districts, there's 20 superintendents, so the vote is even. So the small districts who, the small districts could influence the vote in a way that the larger districts are, you know.
And if, if districts contributed to something like this proportionally, then going forward, might that continue? And then might that have some impact on the voting structure of this board as well?
Yeah. If we rewrote our bylaws and voted to, right. I mean, that's a political mechanism.
Wow. Yeah. Okay.
I think, no, I think, so one of the other conversations we had was around the one-time ask, right? Because we all know what we're seeing across the Commonwealth, people, building costs go up and town meetings, towns vote on a building and then all of a sudden they have to go back to the town meeting floor to ask for another 500 or another million. And we asked about that. And without getting a firm guarantee, we got a pretty strong assurance from the finance team there that this, the difference here, as opposed to going to a town to build a school through MSBA, is this one-time capital assessment gets us the loan, gets us that full amount of the loan, which I'm sure there's a contingency built into, whether, I can't, don't quote me if it's a 10 or 15% contingency, but there's a contingency built into the loan that's a buffer above what the actual costs of production are going to be.
And then will costs increase in order for that loan to be repaid? Or is the $2 million the full cost of the project?
No. So the $2 million is the cost to get a loan.
And then?
That's what it costs us to act, to secure the loan. I can't guarantee that tuition won't go up every year after this. But again, the board votes on that. So we have the right, just like you have the right to say no to my proposed budget, which is really your budget. We could turn around to Fran next year and say, no, there's no way you're going up 11% and figure it out.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because I can't go back to my committee with a 14 in the first year and an 11 in the second year and say, we own this. I can't believe we just assessed ourselves this amount. Like eventually, there's a diminishing return on that. And as you learned at MASs, every superintendent has a different relationship with their board. So how that gets rolled out politically, each of the 20 communities is drastically different as well. There's only a few of us who are doing it at this level right now because there's a lot of backend work in some of the larger communities being done. So, believe it or not, it's an information-only update. I do appreciate the conversation because it is going to help me make whatever informed decision I can make with my one vote. I will tell you, my gut is, I, I don't see how we don't do it. I see no, no rational way of, of saying no to this. Even if we had to build this in our operating budget, which would be horrific, in my opinion, I don't see a way that we say no to this. This, they are our students. This is our public school option for this, this population of students. It is still, good or bad, the most fiscally responsible way to educate the majority of those students. So, I, I, and, and I just can't in good faith let the building continue to go. And, and I can't think about kids by name who might suddenly be in a building where something literally dies during-
Our, our students in essentially our building. So, I, I agree with you.
So, I, yeah. Now, I, I have no issue fighting for what number we fall on between sixty-five and a hundred, to the extent that I can.
Well, okay. Thank you.
So, that transitions wonderfully into the first prelim conversation around budget. I will not read all of this to you. I know you've, you've had it and most of you have seen it already, but I just wanted it in there for the community purposes and to calibrate our understanding again. So, this obviously comes right out of the budget book that, I just want to make sure people understood the components of the budget, operating and capital improvement. We're really talking about operating budget at this point in time. And, you know, Michael and I spent a long time really making sure we were calibrated as, as a leadership team around who the school budget really does represent. And it represents that one group of constituents that doesn't have a voice and a vote necessarily. And we will continue to go with a bottom-up approach and take a zero-based budgeting attack mode on this. We, the numbers you're gonna see tonight are already gonna change by two o'clock tomorrow. We have our second leadership team meeting on this. So, the first leadership team meeting was really to just get ready for tonight. Principals were given, for lack of a better term, digital worksheets to help make some tough decisions around programming and staffing, to help close the gap that we're gonna talk about tonight and talk about the exact same phenomenon we talked about last year. How can you right-size a school district and still move the school district forward? So, if we need to offer computer science, engineering at a higher level, if we need to continue to offer extensions and supports, if we need to continue to offer schedules at the element, at the middle of high school that allow kids maybe to cross into another grade level because they've already advanced in mathematics or science in a particular grade level, something has to give. We only have so many dollars and so many people. So, those are the hard conversations we start tomorrow. So, what will happen is we'll do that work tomorrow. At the first January meeting, you'll see our first round of thoughts, and you'll be able to give me your feedback on those. Second January meeting, we'll make some tougher decisions. We'll refine the budget some more to try to close the gap. And in theory, by February sixth, we'll have the gap closed and the budget book drafted. So, if we learned anything from last year, with an aggressive timeline and some hard work, we can, we can get it done. I won't dwell on this section too much, but this just breaks out the operating budget versus the different mechanisms of funding, chapter seventy, capital improvements, bed reserve, Medicaid, and, and donations. And again, our goal is always to be fiscally responsible and at the same time, support the growth and achievement of all of our students. And as we talked to the community last year, there are some people that think those two things are juxtaposed, and they're not. But we have, we have to be fiscally responsible. At the same time, we have a responsibility to continue to support the growth and achievement of all of our kids and make sure that Rockport Public Schools is competitive and providing them for college and career readiness to the best of our abilities.
And all of this, Mark, just to add for the record, all of this will appear once again in the budget-
Correct.
-book that gets handed out-
You got it.
-at town meeting and is available. And this is the first of probably four, three or four sessions that we typically have as workshops in public. This is typically, because it's the most conservative, but also fluid, because we know it's, it's the awe-inspiring, oh, my God, what are we gonna do now until we work through the problem? And of course, the consortium isn't even in this slide yet. So-
Correct.
It's a process, and it's not the final. There'll be a lot of discussion before we get there.
So, this is the big-picture overview page. And I put together the notes on the right-hand side to kind of guide our conversations. And so, you can see what some of the big drivers are. If you remember last year's budget, that gap at the bottom was around three fifty-ish. It is up over six thirty at this point in time. There are some major drivers that have made that happen, so we'll talk through those drivers. You'll see right, you'll see one, the town contribution at the bottom is placeholdered at two-point-seven. So, when I came in, we were used to two-three. We moved to two-five last year. And I believe, based on conversations that I've had preliminarily, we will be safe to ask for two-seven. With that ask, that still creates a pretty large budget reduction need. One of the big drivers in here is we are currently in negotiations with the RTA. So, we have built in an RTA COLA reserve with the assumption that we are, are going to bargain in good faith and settle on a contract. And it would be a bad budget decision to not account for something there. So, that, that is in there as a driver. The district increases, I'll start at the top, so you can see where these nine, nine percents, four percent, five percent increases come from. The major drivers across all areas are around salary adjustments. So, June and I have gone through all of those to the best of her and my abilities to make sure that the salary adjustments are reflected in there. There is a placeholder in there for a Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Data. That is, while, while that is a new position in the district, it's not necessarily new money because we have reduced from two principals to one at another school. So, there's money in the budget at this point in time. Doesn't mean any of this stuff makes the final cut, quite honestly, but I just want, in transparency, I want you to see what creates the totality of that number. Also, we have the placeholder for the early retirement plan in there. We had to place it somewhere, so we have placed it in here.
In the district line.
Yep. Yep. The three schools, the majority of those increases are salary adjustments. The COLA reserve, which was spread across all areas, spread across central office and the three schools, pretty equitably, just so that we can do some simple calculation for the first round of budgeting. And increases in supplies and digital resources. So, in some cases, we have digital resources where we have contracts that those numbers are either going up or the contract is at end of life, and then we have to renew the contracts. So, those could be curriculum resources. Those could be, as Amy talked about today, they could be repositories or some kind of data collection resource. The Special Ed Student Services Department, again, the majority of those are salary adjustments, COLA reserve. And then also tuition, sorry, tutoring services. We, we are projected to go up in that area based on current student needs and the fact that we might have under-budgeted in that area based on past needs. So, we want to make sure we fix that. And increase in our need for outside evaluations, contracted work and legal work, legal services. So, I, I, you know, June talks about truth to lending, truth in lending a lot, to make sure that we're trying to budget as accurately as possible. And I think we do ourselves a disservice when we keep certain line items down and keep our fingers crossed that we're not gonna spend money in those areas. So, this is more reflective of the Student Services Department. And you will see that the non-consortium tuitions, the private schools, OSD, which hit us with fourteen percent last year, has hit us with four-point-six-nine this year. So, that's an eighteen-point-six-nine increase in two straight, in, in, over two years. Again, not negotiable, not avoidable. And then, an eight percent increase in transportation. Again, we're on an island. Our special ed services outside of the district are not on the island. And as a result, we have transportation costs. And we have only so many transportation companies. Athletic increases, again, transportation and some expenses and repairs that we are learning quickly that we don't want to find ourselves in a situation like the consortium. So, we want to make sure we're taking care of our equipment and anything else in the athletic department that needs to be taken care of. And a lot of it is around safety, of player safety or equipment safety. Operation Management, again, sorry, Operation Maintenance, that's around salary adjustments, supplies. Large projected increase in electric. And that's the biggest one in the utility section. And the only celebration really right now is a decrease in transportation because we have made our final payments on the two buses that we're making payments on. So, that's kind of a really high-end look. The work that the leadership team will engage in tomorrow, that the two principals have been really leading their leadership teams through, is how do we do what we did last year? How do we present to you the gap-closing strategies? And last year, it was a number that was less than this. We did have a soft plan, a three-to-four-year plan around making some, some financial decisions. And what I've explained to the leadership team is that plan just has to happen in two years, last year and this year, as opposed to slowly over three or four years. One of the things we'll talk about is, you know, what money, how our reserve looks. June will talk more about that in the January meeting. That'll also come into play when we're talking about negotiations. So, you know, are we getting our bang for our buck out of that override money over time? And how long does, how long does that stretch out? So, some of those conversations will be, will be a little clearer to us in the two January meetings. So, that's, that's the big picture. I, I look at that number and I put myself in your seat right now. And I, I don't want you to finish tonight thinking, oh, my God, that's double last year's number. How's this gonna get done? Because that's probably what everybody who saw the number originally in my office thought too. I'm telling you, it's gonna get done. We don't really have an option. We're gonna make some hard decisions, and we're gonna move the district forward. And that's the best answer I can give you right now until you let us do our work for the next two or three weeks. So, thoughts, comments, questions?
Well, I think the status of this information is about where we are every year when we start. The amount that we're off by is different by a large factor, but the process is the same. So, I think we look forward to the detail and the presentation of how it's gonna be resolved while still increasing the sorts of services that we want for the students in our system.
I think the positive aspect of, of programming and services is we're, we're really close right now, right? So, we identified computer science and engineering as a gap. But when we finished the surveys, the entry plan, and the deep dive into programming, we didn't identify other massive gaps. We have, Amy talked, Rose talked a little bit tonight about business classes. Yes, we, you know, we need a, we need a department model there. So, we would like to be able to offer micro and macroeconomics and some business classes, sports management, to those kind of things that a lot of larger schools offer. Larger schools also have an entire department in those areas. We're gonna leverage really good people. They often come out of math and history departments based on the person's academic background, what their master's degree in undergrad is in. So, Amy has, has plans to talk to the faculty and make some good decisions around what those course offerings can look like. So, believe it or not, I do believe we'll still be able to gap-fill where we need to, to continue to move particularly the high school programming forward. It's just gonna be what structural decisions are made to, to get us to a place with that number is, is not the number you're seeing right in front of you.
I have one question, and I apologize if this is redundant, or you've already explained it. On this budget development page, we see that the, the town's contribution is about seventy-five percent of the anticipated cost. Can you help me a little bit? The FY25 town contribution, fourteen million, three hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Is that about seventy-five percent of what we're estimating?
Yeah. If you look at the top, the total gross budget is projected at seventeen and a half. Right? And the contribution comes in at fourteen-three. And then, the rest of that gets made up, oop, wrong direction.
Thank you.
Right? So, that makes sense. And then, the rest of that gets made up by the other components.
Thank you.
Looking for direction from you or the chair about comments tonight, or is tonight more, more information and waiting until the January comes, you know, to our meeting for more in-depth questioning? Like, what, I guess, what would, what are you, what are you looking for? What are your thoughts?
Comments are always welcome. Mark may not have answers until after he has that meeting with his senior staff to think about strategies.
I guess I'm just looking at some of the notes on the, on the right-hand side there. And I guess just some, I guess, you know, questions. I don't know, now is the time to talk about that, or if it's more, kind of more when we get into a deeper dive into some of it, maybe?
So, I mean, I could address some of the, I don't wanna say simpler, but easier ones to discuss. You know-
Which are probably not the ones I have questions about.
Probably not, but I'll do it anyway. And then, you can tell me I'm wrong. So, like, salary adjustments, right? It's unavoidable. We have salary adjustments. How many people we make salary adjustments on is not unavoidable. So, that's the tough one. The early retirement plan is, is an unknown, right? I came to you with a hope. We won't- I can't give you, I just can't give you any yet, but I, I anticipate after-
That was one of my questions.
Yeah. I anticipate after January first that I'll be able to give some level of update there.
Was February the deadline, Mark?
Correct. February first, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But my hope would all know at least something productive by January first.
Holiday conversations.
Right. Right. You know, stuff like supplies and digital resources, yeah, we, we, those are, that's small numbers, though, when it comes, when you compare it to salary adjustments and COLA increases. The only one that I, I think is premature to talk about right now is that Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment position. Yeah. I've, I've been honest with everybody who will, who has heard me, that I, I think that's a gap in the district. It's not necessarily related to me personally. I think it is a gap in the district when you try to run a school district and you don't have a point person doing that work. Eventually, you have a capacity issue. Can the leadership team, which includes me, continue to do the work that we continue to present to you? Yes. But at some point, I think a school district make, and the leadership makes decisions on how well they can do certain levels of work and how much time and effort they can put into some because something else takes their attention. But again, nothing, nothing in this plan right now is set in stone. I think this is a, this is a hope that there is, there is some movement that's possible to get that number down. But again, some of that number, and I, I don't want to discuss too much in public, right, but some of that number does include the RTA COLA reserve. And, and we're confident that we need, we need and will get the contract done.
I have one more question. On this chart, the percent increase currently stands at five-point-two-one percent. If we're successful at that six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-dollar budget reduction, does that reduce that percentage increase in the end when we finish?
Give me a minute to process the way you asked that.
Sorry. We, we see in this draft a five-point-two-one percent increase. But then, at the bottom, we see we need to trim six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars, right? We need to do some budget reductions. If the budget reductions are successful, then are we not, we, we've, we might not have a five-point-two-one percent increase. Is that how it works?
Five-point-two-one percent includes making those reductions successfully.
Yes, I believe that's true.
So, there wouldn't be an additional drop from five-point-two-one percent?
Correct. Correct. That's what, that's, it's an assumption of a budget reduction. And, and just so that there's context, last year, it was an eight-point-zero-nine. So, this, that percentage increase is actually lower than last year's, believe it or not.
Right.
It's just that we have some new financial drivers that could be potentially large.
And actually, the consortium number isn't in there, so we don't even know if that number is accurate.
It is not accurate. So, where you, when you, where you see special education, student services at a five-point-three-seven increase for a total of whatever that is, sixty, six million nine, that's gonna go up based on the tuition increases.
Okay. So, I guess this is our-
We've seen worse.
First blush. Right. First blush, but now the real work begins.
Yep. Yep.
Other questions or comments, or that cover mark where you were kind of going?
Can I ask a dumb question? And this is based on, because all my years have been the previous superintendent, so I can't help but see that spreadsheet, okay? It's burned into my brain. So, he always had the ticking clock. So, the ticking clock bucket of money still exists somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. But I understand the, it's sort of like teaching your kids not to use their savings just because, you know, you want an extra pizza.
So, June and I have had really deep conversations about this. You've charged me to be fiscally responsible-
Yes.
-and to move the district forward. There are current allocation practices that are not necessarily as fiscally responsible as they should be. So, it would be, in my opinion, a bad decision to spend down or touch certain pockets of money just because it's there. just because it's there, as opposed to making good decisions with the money that we have in front of us and to get a little leaner and meaner theoretically, so that that pocket of money lasts a little longer.
So make the tough decisions, make the right decisions, and see where we come out.
And see if you can buy yourself another year or another two or half, or whatever that looks like. Let's pose carefully as I could put that.
I like that. I just wanted to know if that bucket was still around.
Yeah, and June, if, you know, yes. And if the chair, if the chair wants.
Where is that?
And if the chair wants, you know, June, June could probably put together some kind of overview when she, when she does the, you know, the quarterly reports or something to maybe address that particular.
Yeah, I think that.
Phenomenon too.
Great, thank you.
It's a good question.
It's in my head.
And just like last year, as we start to be transparent with the community through you, I'll do the same thing at the staff level. I'm not gonna, I, I, last year, I, you know, I gave updates here and then I held voluntary staff meetings. And then I gave updates here and I held voluntary staff meetings. You know, people within the organization need to know what decisions are, minimally how, what, you know, what, what struggles we're trying to solve or overcome.
I have only one more question, which is, I, can you help me understand why Medicaid reimbursements go back not to the schools?
So.
Or if, or would this be a conversation that would be worth pursuing? Or is our town so generous that it's probably not a great avenue for us to pursue?
So this has been a discussion point for years and years and years. And I, I can't speak to why the town feels compelled to receive that money in. But the argument has often been that the generosity of the town far outweighs the small amount that that would represent. But it, it does come up over and over. And partially, the response we've gotten is, well, fine, we can do that. But then we'll deduct that amount from the amount we give you. So it seems like a wash.
I mean, this is also predicated on no substantial changes to the health insurance package. And I do know that, that the town is currently in a conversation around the health insurance package. So, you know, I, I believe some of you have been through that before as well from a conversational standpoint. So depending how that conversation goes between the town and the provider, it could positively or negatively impact our conversations as well.
And is this another probably silly question of someone who's not in the education field with the step changes and the lane changes and all those things, which I think I have maybe somewhat of a handle on after years? Is this predicated on everyone who said that they are going to change lanes?
Correct, because if I, if we don't budget that way, then we're gonna, yeah. So yes, right now, it is predicated on everybody who predicted that they'd finish a graduate degree or that they'd get to forty-five credits or ninety credits or whatever that they're chasing, that, that would actually come to fruition. I mean, June can probably tell you on average whether that's a sixty percent or a seventy percent hit. I'm not comfortable figuring out that average over time because it'll be the one year that we get it wrong, quite honestly. And then we've done a bad job of covering for it. So we do need to budget for it.
That is a regression from the past ten years of practice, though. So I'll, I'll just point that out, that the, Mark's predecessor would take that information in. And then he would always call it rolling the dice, which was, would make some of our skin crawl because, but I know what he was getting at, which was, he would make an educated guess. And it was usually within one or two percent of the actual number. What preceded that was essentially taking people a hundred percent at their words, which would inflate the budget. So it's something to, to think about.
So it's also a budget reduction strategy. This is the first blush.
Yep.
So I'm not necessarily saying that I will or won't do it that way this time.
Right.
I'm, I'm a different budgeter than I was a year ago.
Yep.
Because I now have a year under my belt in this community and with this process. And I have a different number to, to deal with than I did a year ago. So.
What's the deadline for those? When does, when does that happen? Is it, any idea?
Last, it was last, oh, was this year? It was October, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah, it was October or something.
September, yeah, September.
So, I mean, they're in. They're in. But again.
I guess in terms of.
They have to tell, yeah.
Proving that they made those, yeah. When is that?
That could happen.
Anytime up until August?
I don't know, even though that that's contractually obligated in there. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, okay. So it's not like the February first deadline with.
No, 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 no. No. So, so just to put closure on that, just because we did it one way last year doesn't necessarily mean we'll be in a position to do it the same way again. You know, and it could be, to use your terms, it could be a roll of the dice. Or, or better said, would be a prediction of practice over time, right?
Yes.
If we look at a five-year projection, say, generally speaking.
Intention was.
No, I know. The average has been sixty-eight percent over five years. Maybe we play with that percentage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it makes me nervous, but it might be a necessity.
Right.
All right. So a good and awe-inspiring first blush, but more to come.
That's all we have tonight.
So I have one walk-on school committee discussion out of the blue question. And it really, I'm doing it, I guess, on behalf of the seniors at the high school. And that is, in the dim past, when we were seniors in high school, we would get a yearbook well before graduation. And then would walk around and our friends would often inscribe, don't look at this until after you graduated. Notes, even close friends who you might keep in contact with, expressing their best wishes for the future. And people who you'd lose contact with would also give you neat little notes. And maybe this is, maybe I'm coming thirty years late to the game. But I'm astonished that the current procedure is four to five months after graduation. Four to five months, the yearbooks come in, at which point your friends have scattered to the four corners of the earth. And there's not a lot of interest in even getting those messages. So my question is, why is that the case now, particularly in an era of digital printing? And the answer that I thought I heard, which I don't accept, is, well, we have to get the graduation photos in. There's one page of graduation photos. That doesn't seem to warrant losing that experience for the senior kids. So it, this sounds like a complaint. It's more just like a stunned observation. And it feels like the sort of thing that it, it's hard to believe that the industry practice. I mean, that's awfully convenient for the yearbook publishers. But is there truly no other option for that?
Well, and I don't know that there, if you go, so being a senior parent this year, I've just purchased our yearbook. And my, my senior is really surprised to learn he wouldn't get it until he was already in college. But they do still sell all the pens and all the stuff to write your, you know, and I, so I don't know that it's necessarily the, I'm not sure, because I only have a senior at this school. But I don't, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily what happens across the board.
So I, I don't know, I don't know, Mark, like what your experience was in other districts.
You just thought a way to make me not talk at all. How, how good is that?
Yeah.
I will, well, that's not my experience in other districts, nor did, nor did your superintendent know it was our experience here, quite honestly. Because I'm, I'm a little far removed from the yearbook process. So I will happily talk with Principal Rose and whoever the yearbook advisors are and try to figure out the answer to the question. But, I mean, I've seen some districts do supplemental, like the spring supplement to it. And that goes out after the hard copy and the kid just slides down the back of the book. So there, there, I, my, I'm not sure it's an industry practice. Let's put it that way.
I, I would find it hard to believe because the production processes when we were graduating was still allowed for this volume to come out well in time. So I can't believe.
And we only have fifty seniors.
Yeah, if I could briefly speak to that. I, from the student perspective, it is not ideal for the yearbooks to be published when we're firmly in college. And from what I've seen from friends of mine who have graduated from high schools, predominantly private schools, but their, their yearbooks do come out very early on. And they, and they get to go through that whole process of walking the halls of the last, their last days as seniors and talking to their peers and having them, you know, inscribe their little messages and.
I will do some homework.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I, I just thought of it. So sorry to spring it out in a public session, but.
I will do some homework.
All right. Do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.